This time I'd like to call to order the Monday, April 4th, 2022 council meeting. We'll begin with a moment of reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, council, you've had an opportunity to review the study session minutes of March 7th and the council meeting minutes of March 7th. Are there any comments, corrections? Being none, they stand approved. We have no, or we do have communications petitions and awards. We have a donation to the food pantry. So if at this time, if Mr. Wheeler can come to the podium.
That was fast. I thought it was like six lines down.
The city council has approved another donation to the food pantry in the amount of $15,000.
Thank you.
And I know you've been, you've taken over the food pantry, what, for a couple of years now, two years?
Maybe even three.
Maybe even closer to three.
Yeah. I don't, I don't exactly remember. It's so much fun.
But I'm sure you get a lot of volunteer help.
Yes, we get lots of volunteers.
Rotary?
Rotary, Optimist Club, several of the local churches. We even get help from like the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, the Interact Club from the high school, the, the Optimist Club kids are called Octagon. So we do, we get a lot of help at the food pantry from the local community. We service roughly, we service roughly 700 families on and off throughout the year. Some people we only see once a year, typically around holidays, and other people we help every single month. We don't really, as long as you live in the Vandelia Butler area, we are happy to help you. We don't ask weird questions. We don't make you prove who you are or what you, you know, we don't make you show us banking details if you need assistance. Okay, everyone wants to take pictures. I don't even look at them.
They're taking pictures of me.
Oh, okay. I'll sign mine, that'll be worth more. But we are happy to help at the food pantry, and I really enjoy doing it.
Any big needs that you would like to express that the food pantry needs at this time?
No, not, not, we don't have any specific needs, although it is really hard for us to get ahold of Jell-O. I know that sounds really stupid. It is very hard for us to get Jell-O, like Jell-O pudding and Jell-O, the Jell-O stuff, like kids eat. The kids like that. And Chef Boyardee credits, spaghetti meatballs, SpaghettiOs, raviolis. Those are the two things we have the hardest time getting from the local stores. But other than that, any other help, we're happy if people want to make donations or if you want to come work. People even like Bob, I have Bob picking up baked goods once a week from Kroger's. Richard helps from the Rotary Club, so does Dave. Actually, how many Rotarians are up there?
We got plenty, most of them, of us. We got one up.
Women. That's okay, the Optimists also help.
We're trying to convert them.
Although I've not ever seen Dan. I'm just kidding. A special note, Dan Went's wife, Laura, is probably our very best volunteer employee. She handles roughly six months out of the year doing our calls for our clients who come to the food pantry. If it wasn't for Dan, I'd have to work even harder. Thank you, Dan. Tell you what, if I'd said that.
Yes, sir.
Make sure, make sure she sees that video.
All right.
She's pretty great.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
And if I may, I'll just make clear to the audience that last year, city council used 15,000 of the American Rescue Plan funds, and, and this year, they're putting another 15,000 forward. And the principal idea behind that is if, not only operationally, but if a freezer goes out, if there's some piece of equipment that goes out, there's an emergency fund that's established to maintain continuity of services in the Vandelia Butler food pantry.
Thank you. All right, we have no public hearing. That brings us to comments from interested citizens. So if anyone would like to make a comment, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and your comment.
Mark Fernilias, 1232 Bramley Court. You might know why I'm here. PC 22-03. So just to recap from last time, the several concerns were school populations, degradation of the property that's proposed there on Mulberry Road, and as well as the future cost to the city. So most of what you've heard so far has been the concerns, and so tonight, I'd like to start talking about some solutions moving forward. And so the first concern there was the school population. We saw some great data last time of the declining population in the schools, so I think that kind of eliminates that concern. The future costs to the city are hard to predict, and I know Vandelia is, is committed to bettering the community over time. So that's probably an investment in the community. So that leaves us with the main concern of the deterioration of the property. Last time, Mr. Ayers mentioned that you get what you pay for, and the city's not actually paying for the properties, but the city does have some control of what goes in there. And so I've been thinking about what could potentially be a solution to that concern of the deterioration of the property, because it is in a, in good area next to the rec center, and I think we want to, to keep that area looking nice. And as we've seen tonight, Vandelia is committed to, to excellence. We've got excellent schools, excellent opportunities, excellent community, and excellent people here in Vandelia. And so I think maintaining that excellence is, is a key, key portion. So right now, I believe that the development that's planned there is mainly just a siting type facility. And so one of the things that I thought of that could potentially be a solution to prevent those properties from degrading over time would be to do brick fronts on the properties. So I do not know if that is within the control of the city council to, to stipulate that in the approval of the development plan. So that is one solution I came up with. Maybe the city council has other, other thoughts, but those are my comments. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else like to make a comment? And for those that are watching via Zoom, if you would like to make a comment, now would be the time. Please raise your hand, and we'll get your comment. Being done, we will move on to our city manager's report where we have some information items. Mr. Went.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. And I would just say to everybody who's in the audience, now's a great time to take out your phone. The city of Vandelia has launched the My Vandelia app, downloadable at Google Play and the App Store. And so what this allows you to do is get a bunch of information from the city, but when you open it, the first button is Report a Concern. You can take a photo of a pothole, a fire hydrant that needs painted, anything that's going on, and report it directly to the city. And so this will help us improve customer service. I really appreciate the work that IT manager Darren Davy and also Communications Manager Rich Hopkins have put into this. The second thing that I'll bring up to you is I've given you a resume to look at. Next Monday, Mrs. Angela Swartz will begin in the position of Executive Assistant/Deputy Clerk of Counsel. Ms. Swartz is a, and, and nobody's more relieved than Missy, and I might be second in this because she's been pulling double duty. Ms. Swartz is a veteran of the U.S. Navy. She is, as I would say, very squared away, currently serves the Montgomery County Community and Economic Development Director, so works directly with them, is very well-equipped with her experience, and really rose to the top in this recruitment. So I'm excited, she's, I'm excited about her, and you're really going to like working with her. And so I figured I would provide this here for credentials. She'll be here Monday, the 11th, in accordance at our council meeting on the 18th, and so looking forward to that. The next information items that I have for you relate to income tax assistance. There's extended hours. And so in the report, and what's showing up on the screen, the Tax Division will be open Saturday, April 9th, 8:00 a.m. to noon, Friday, April 15th, 7:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Saturday, April 16th, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., Monday, April 18th, from 7:30 to 6:00 p.m., and the staff will be there to assist taxpayers in the preparation of city income tax returns. The deadline, of course, is April 18th. We also have information on here about electronic filing, which is available from the homepage, from a button that you can click, which is Pay Taxes, and that was Councilmember Folick's idea, and so that, we thought that was a good one. That concludes my report, Your Honor.
Thank you. We have no old business, and that brings us to our first resolution of the night, that being Resolution 22-R-30. Mr. McDonald, by title only.
A resolution authorizing the purchase of thermal imaging cameras and chargers to All American Fire Apparatus in the amount of $31,976.
Thank you. Mr. Went.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. The Division of Fire continues to look for ways to sharpen the saw through the application of technology. The 2020 budget, 2022 budget includes $35,000 to replace and upgrade thermal imaging cameras, which are used in public emergencies. This will provide a thermal imaging camera for every riding position on the ladder truck and engine, and also provides them for medic two, which is the quote-unquote "fire medic", which is assigned to structure fires. This is generally designated as the Rapid Intervention Team, who would be the first responders to a mayday call on the fire ground. The quotes that we received out of the three of them, the lowest was $31,976 from All American Fire Apparatus. Based on the competitive quotes, I recommend that city council waive formal bidding to allow for the purchase of thermal imaging cameras and associated equipment from All American Fire Apparatus for the quoted amount of $31,976.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Resolution 22-R-30.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakeslee and a second by Vice Mayor Lewis to approve Resolution 22-R-30. Is there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have Resolution 22-R-31.
A resolution awarding the bid for asphaltic concrete requested by the Public Works Department to Valley Asphalt in the amount of $72 a ton for type-two asphalt and $74 a ton for type-one asphalt as the lowest and best bid.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Your Honor, bids were opened publicly for the asphalt purchase on March 15th. Two asphalt suppliers submitted bids for the purchase of asphalt. Valley Asphalt was the low bidder, with prices of $72 per ton for type-two base asphalt and $74 per ton for type-one surface asphalt. I recommend awarding the bid to Valley Asphalt as the lowest and best bidder for the prices that I just stated. This bid for asphalt is to be purchased and used by the Public Works Division to patch and or make, make repairs to potholes, utility holes that are created when a water main break occurs. $40,000 is appropriated for the asphalt purchase in the permissive tax, and $20,000 is appropriated for asphalt at Castle Hills Golf Course for our annual cart path resurfacing project. The city is not required to purchase any specific amount and will only pay based on the unit cost per consumption.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 22-R-31 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Fars and a second by Councilman Ayers to approve Resolution 22-R-31 as presented. Are there any comments from council? Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have Resolution 22-R-32.
Resolution awarding the bid for the resurfacing of various streets requested by the Public Works Department to John R. Jurgensen Company at the lowest and best bid price of $1,059,893.42.
Thank you. Mr. Went.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. Bids were publicly open for the annual street resurfacing project on March 15th. Two sets of specifications were issued, and both contractors submitted bids for the project. Bids ranged from a little over $1,059,000 to $1,094,000. Our estimate for the project was $995,000. This is kind of in line with what everybody is seeing. This project, along with our curb and sidewalk replacement project, is a major part of the city's enhanced infrastructure policy goal. I recommend awarding the contract for this project to John R. Jurgensen Company as the lowest and best bid, at their price of $1,059,893.42. This amount combined with our concrete repair project totals $1,442,842 to be used for improvements on our roadways this year. We had a total in our annual operating capital budget of 1.3 million, and we, of course, set aside through the American Rescue Plan Act another $150,000. And so although it came in a little bit above estimate, we were anticipating that, and it looks like Mr. Baumann and Mr. Cron got it right on this one, so we're within what we have budgeted.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution 22-R-32 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Councilman Blakeslee to approve Resolution 22-R-32 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have Resolution 22-R-33.
Resolution awarding the bid for the installation of decorative fence at the northwest quadrant of I-75 and U.S. 40 requested by the Public Works Department to Buckeye Fence Builders at the lowest and best bid price of $120,037.50.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. March 15th was a very busy day because we publicly opened bids for the installation of the decorative fence as well. Nine contractors took out bid packages, six contractors submitted bids for the project, ranging from a little over $120,000 to almost $213,458. Our estimate for the project was $130,000. The project meets the city's enhanced infrastructure and vibrant policy goals, and this will be a great addition to the city's entryways. I'm recommending awarding the contract for this project to Buckeye Fence Builders as the lowest and best bid, at their price of $120,037.50. There's $150,000 appropriated for the project.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 22-R-33.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Ayers and a second by Councilwoman Fars that we approve Resolution 22-R-33 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have Resolution 22-R-34.
A resolution waiving the bid and awarding the contract for the Art Park restroom building project to Vancon General Contractors in an amount not to exceed $250,000.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. I request and recommend that council waive the formal bid process and award the Art Park restroom facility project to Vancon General Contractors as a design-build project. Funding for the restroom will come from the 2021 and 2022 American Rescue Plan Act funds for this project. As part of the project, Vancon will provide turnkey scope of work to include design fabrication and installation of the restroom, which will be ADA compliant. The project's scope, in addition to project management, onsite supervision, scheduling of trades, also includes site work, earthwork, storm systems, sanitary sewer, water service, electric service, concrete foundation, exterior masonry, carpentry, at a cost of $247,888. I'm requesting council waive the bid process and award the design build contract to Vancon General Contractors for the Art Park restroom building project at a cost not to exceed $250,000.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Resolution 22-R-34.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakeslee and a second by Councilman Ayers to approve Resolution 22-R-34 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have Resolution 22-R-35.
A resolution approving the part-time pay plan for seasonal and part-time employees of the city of Vandelia, Ohio.
Thank you. Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. I've enclosed here a, an update to the part-time pay plan. Our city, of course, especially in the Parks and Recreation Department and Division of Fire, is built on part-time service, at least in its current status, and, and these updates are necessary in order to recruit and retain talent, to keep Vandelia both a safe and secure place to live and also a vibrant one.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 22-R-35 as presented. Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Lewis and a second by Councilman Folick to approve Resolution 22-R-35 as presented. Any comments from council? Call the roll.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. We have one ordinance in its first reading, that being Ordinance 22-13. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance approving a planned unit development, preliminary development plan, and associated zoning map change for Copperfield towns on land generally located at 3330 Mulberry Road.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. The applicant, DDC Management, has submitted an application requesting a planned unit development, PUD, preliminary plan for a single 11-acre parcel located at 3330 Mulberry Road. The applicant is proposing to construct 87 owner-occupied attached townhome units in both two-unit buildings or three-unit configurations on the site with a density of eight units per acre. The proposal is consistent with the 2020 Vision Vandelia Comprehensive Plan. Planning Commission voted four to one to recommend approval of the proposed preliminary planned unit development plan with the following conditions. Mulberry Road right-of-way is improved in accordance with City Code Section 1234.09F, responsibility for thoroughfare improvements east of their entrance to ensure the city has infrastructure in place for future development. And number two, instead of Mulberry right-of-way improvements made west of their entrance, a vegetative screen with a variety of evergreen trees along the access road ramp to better increase sound dampening for this community and surrounding areas.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
Just real, real quick, for point of order, am I correct that because this is a PED request, there has to be a second hearing, correct? So tonight's is just procedural to get it to a second. I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 22-13 in the first reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Councilman Blakeslee to approve Ordinance 22-13 in its first reading. Any comments?
Just a point of order, does that include the comments then automatically of the Planning Commission, or do we have to specifically include those?
The conditions.
Yeah, the conditions. I'm sorry, I didn't look at to see if it was in there. It can't hurt to add those in there, in the motion.
Conditions one and two, yeah.
Those are in Section 1 of the proposed ordinance before you, right here.
Yeah, no, we don't, because they're in the ordinance, I'm sorry.
Very good.
Thank you.
Any other comments from council?
I, I'll just say real quick, I mean, even, I made the motion to get it to the second reading, because our ordinance is required, but for a number of reasons, which I'll go into detail at our next meeting during the second reading, I, I will not be supporting the PUD preliminary plan as it's currently proposed for both traffic and noise issues, which I'll elaborate more on at the next meeting, I think, during the public hearing.
I have to, did, did a lot of research over the weekend, and I'm really concerned that we don't have a long-term traffic plan for Mulberry Road. Also really concerned, and we'll talk about it more, I guess, in, in detail, a sound barrier on that piece of property, which I think we all sit up here and know that it would come back to the city at some point. But the traffic, the, the east side of Mulberry is extremely concerning unless we solve that issue in a, in a plan. And that area is going to develop at some point. It's just, it's not, it's not ready right now. So I know we'll discuss it more, just, just moves it forward to the, to the next opportunity, but that's what I, that's what I feel right now.
I have to say, I agree with what's been said. My, you know, biggest issues are that Mulberry, I don't think is real conducive right now for that type of traffic, so there's going to have to be a better plan there. And as Mr. Went brought up last meeting, that at some point, there is going to need to be a sound barrier, and more than likely, the city's going to be on the hook for it, and they're not going to be able to get any funding, if I understood you correctly, in this situation. So I think, I think we need to look at that very closely to, before we make any decisions on whether or not to move forward with it.
I, of course, I, of course, will just jump in and state that, looking forward with my current forecast, this year, of course, over by the curve further to the east, we'll do an asphalt overlay of a portion of Mulberry Road. And then it isn't until 2027 and 2029 that we look further west. So there is some time before there's any planned asphalt overlay, of course. I, I do believe, and I think that it's very well-received, that I don't think that 84, 87 units triggers a massive multimillion-dollar expansion into opening up Mulberry Road, you know, at this point, for that maintenance, understanding that it could take decades. But if a proposal does come before council for that larger area moving east, the lead time on that building, I think, is something that we could work into our capital improvement planning. It, it's also worth considering that in the area just east of this parcel that's being proposed, as you go up northeast, pretty much immediately, that's into Butler Township. And so understanding the impacts of that area, who has domain over it, that being the county engineer, and what those improvements might, might cause. And so I, I think all of that information is, all of those points are well-received by staff. And we put this, we put this forward, simply saying that it, it plays into the long-term planning, but also, as Councilmember Folick has said, there, there are a lot of concerns with how the plan is laid out right now. And so, you know, I, I, I'm hearing what you're saying, and certainly, if there's additional information that would be useful in your deliberation that I can bring back, I, and myself and the city staff are, are willing to get that for you and provide that for you to help in your deliberation.
All right, thank you. Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
No.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes six one. We have no ordinances in our second reading. We do have a couple of emergency ordinances, the first one being Emergency Ordinance 22-11. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance amending Section 144205 and 1482.10D4 of the Vandelia Codified Ordinances by adopting a new schedule of fees for permits and inspections and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Went. Mr. Went.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. We've presented over this at several occasions. There, before you tonight, will be Emergency Ordinances 22-11 and 22-12. I'll let this testimony stand for both of those. And so I'd like to update the fee schedule. This would include all building permit fees, zoning fees, miscellaneous permit fees, water and sewer tap fees. Building permit fees were last updated in 2015. Tap fees have not been updated since 2004. The last updates on any zoning fees were 2004 as well. And so Director Cron recently gave a detailed presentation on the updated fee schedule that considers future development. Also included in this proposal is a $1 per square foot infrastructure fee that would be used for water, sewer, roadways, debt services related to infrastructure. This is a fairly common practice that's used to capture and account for expenses related to the initial issues relating to development, and I would just request passage with emergency this evening.
Thank you. Since this is an emergency ordinance, I'll open up a public hearing, so if anyone would like to speak on this ordinance, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and your comment. Being done, I'll close the public hearing. Do you have a motion?
I move that we approve Ordinance 22-11 as an emergency.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Farce and a second by Councilman Ayers to approve Ordinance 22-11 as an emergency. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Folic.
Yes.
Councilmember Farce.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have Emergency Ordinance 22-12.
Oh, I gotta read it, don't I? An ordinance amending Chapter 1040 Water and Sewer Tap Section in 1040.02 Permit and Entry Fees of Vandelia Codified Ordinances by adopting a new schedule of feeds, fees for water and sewer permits and declaring an emergency.
Does your comment stand?
Yes, sir.
Since this is an emergency ordinance, I will open a public hearing, so if anyone would like to make a comment, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record and your comment. Being done, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Ordinance 22-12 as an emergency.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folic and a second by Vice Mayor Ayers to approve Ordinance 22-12 as an emergency. Are there any comments from council? Call the roll.
Councilmember Farce.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Folic.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. That brings us to reports from Boards and Commissions, the first item being a variance for the fence in the front yard at 22 Ranch View. Mr. Went.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. The applicant, Rick Turner, Diamond Z Engineering, has requested a variance on behalf of True North Energy LLC, property owner, to allow for the construction of an eight-foot vinyl fence with the front yard at approximately 32 feet from the right-of-way. Per City Code, no fence shall exceed six feet in height in any side of the rear yard in the DB District and may not be constructed in the front of the building line. The variance request is in response to help shield light from the neighboring residential area.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that we approve the variance at 22 Ranch View. I lost my place. 22 Ranch View for the fence in the front yard. Second.
Your Honor, I apologize. There was also a condition that was with that that I omitted, and that was that the vinyl shall be complementary color to the building, such as beige, white, or black, and shall not be, or white and black shall not be used.
I amend my motion to include the condition at 22 Ranch View Drive.
All right, I have a motion by Councilman Blakesley and a second by Vice Mayor Lewis to approve the fence in the front yard at 22 Ranch View Drive with the conditions as noted. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Folic.
Yes.
Councilmember Farce.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion passes seven zero. Council, we have the Board of Zoning Appeal Minutes of March 9th and the Planning Commission Meeting Minutes of March 8th. Are there any comments?
I have a quick request. Is there a way that on the BZA and Planning Commission Minute Meeting Minutes, when there are votes that are unanimous, that we can see who, I mean, if we wanted to contact a BZA or a Planning Commission member, we don't know who voted which way, it just says two to two or four to one, can we add that into the minutes in the future, moving forward, so we have, or at least in the minutes, have them?
It will, it will be a matter of taking a roll call vote, which I believe that they're already doing, and so just noting, noting it that way. So, yeah, we can, we can make those changes in those meetings.
I know at one time, we did have a series of times where there wasn't a unanimous vote. The other votes explained why they didn't vote for it, and that was helpful to council. All right, and that brings us to council comments. We'll start with Mr. McDonald. Mr. Went.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Councilman Ayers.
Nothing, thank you.
Councilwoman Farce.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Moving right along. Councilwoman Woods.
Nothing, thank you.
Councilman Blakesley.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilman Folic.
Just one, and that's to congratulate Mr. Went for being selected on the, if I can get this right, Montgomery County Edge Advisory Committee. He's a representative for the city on that committee now, so it's good to have that representation at the county level for edge funding in the future.
We'll try to bring that home. Thank you.
Please don't recuse yourself.
All right.